President of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you roll call Dan if you're Ben Hough?
Yes.
Jeff Portini?
Yes.
Do you want me to just do the fire lady first and get that out of the way? I did get the certification back from the auditor. And so we need to pass a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 million mill of limitation. This is again, just a renewal, not a replacement.
I move that we adopt the resolution for being some of valid for November.
Is there a second?
No, a second.
Roll call Dan?
Yeah.
Ben?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes. That needs signing, right?
Actually, no, I just fill your names in.
The resolution from last meeting sufficient then?
Yes.
Some representative here for the other two pieces of business.
You want to talk about the next one, fire department?
Sure, because I don't know anything about it.
I spoke with Ted for the fire department. He wasn't able to make it this morning. He has something else committed. He said the deadline for that's not till after our business meeting, so he'll be at our next business meeting. He was talking to us about that. Like I said, he just needs to ask to use a little bit of township, so he's going to be pretty cut and dried quick when it comes into business meeting. So he didn't make it then.
You don't have a copy of this proposal, do you? Any chance we can have it filed to the meeting?
Yeah, yes, sure. If I give it, then I'll either pitch a hard copy or have you know it.
So then we need to talk about the nature works grant. Do you want to just have them explain what they're doing?
I received someone that took a few weeks of time. Did you get that email that sent you last night?
No.
I think I talked to him last night.
Where exactly is this? Is this online?
Yep, that's the right application.
So the deadline we're looking at, postmark September 1st, 2014.
So if you find a view, I think we asked you guys if you guys want to speak on it a little bit. Do you want to speak?
Yes, we actually have applied for some various things that we needed to discuss with the trustees because the values that we found are things that people have actually told us that they would like to see in the park, like a drinking fountain, rubber mulch because some of their children have asthma. So it's a health issue. There's two park benches out there that people tried to open. And include our commercial benches. They would hold up better and be longer, last longer. Sun shades for over the playground equipment so that children could use them, use it through the heat of the day.
Are you saying this is all a thing? Do you include it in the grant?
It's things that we're asking the trustees if they want to include in the grant.
Okay.
These are things that we've talked to people and these are things that people have suggested that they would like to see in the park. They would like to see the spring animals that little kids play on. New chain link fence. A new marquee sign. New flower planters. Sewer for the picnic tables and the shower hens. A new rules and regulations sign because the one there is torn. A new floor for the community building. Paint and primer for the community building. A bike rack and trash cans. Some of the things we did get prices on. Other things we have not gotten prices on yet. One thing we're asking for a nature work grant. The more times you ask for the grant, the less points you get. So if you're going to ask for the grant, the lady said that you might as well ask for as much as you can.
Who was that?
Her email address, it's Fitch is her last name. Her email address, I believe, is on that cover letter. Yeah, Mary Fitch.
Do you have that, Jenny?
It's on that.
It's only the cover letter.
Oh, on their application?
Yes, the first. So did anyone have any questions about the items that?
I mean, like I said, when I received that last night, I forwarded on the things that you said. I think they're all reasonable things to ask for. And we could use it for, I don't see a problem with that.
The one thing that the trustees, to even proceed with this, looks like you have to set aside a certain amount of money. It has to be a set in the budget, separate line in the budget so that they can see that we do have some funding available.
Yeah, we did that last time too.
Yeah, and they want to know.
Do you remember how much that was?
It's a percentage, isn't it, of what?
I think so.
You're talking about the matching funds required on this?
The matching funds was a separate form that we had to fill out. But yes, there is a percentage that needs set aside.
What was it, 20% for the function?
I can't remember how much it was.
Are these your figures on this form or be here, cost analysis schedule? I noticed these other ones don't have, it looks like there's information entered in that. Is that from you?
Yes.
So you have to fill this out already, then, or there's parts of it? And then that's your narrative?
Yes. And each one of the narratives that's come to match the pages on the grant.
So these are the, you're basing these numbers on estimates from some of these items that you've gathered?
Yes. We're still waiting on estimates from the fence. Drinking fountain. Solar sun shades. Meyer Design will give us a price as soon as we know what size area we want covered. Now, I gave the address for the most wanted grant.
You had talked to Meyer Design, send it to get updated. Proposed to pay out your grant then?
Yes.
Because that was an older version of this date?
Say it again.
Probably 2010.
Do you have the other supporting? All that has to go with it, anything that you've mentioned here to this agreement? Documentation, I haven't had a chance to see this yet. I understand Ben got it last night.
And that does need updated because I don't have the spring animals, the bike rack, trash cans.
Both of these you're talking about? You have the narrative and the?
I may have been one of the pricing, but I don't have them in the narrative. And I don't think, oh, I'm not sure I mentioned the information box either. Took them on the outside of the building, so flyers can be put in it.
You're talking about a torn sign? You're talking about the weapons sign on the building?
No, that was kind of the rules and regulations sign that we thought. This is like an information box that they have up at Laking Township.
No, I'm talking about prior, you mentioned that there was, you said a torn sign?
Yes, yes.
Did you want to read your narrative so we can, Dan can hear it? Because I don't have the email, you know, so we can't, for the ones to review it. Because the deadline here is the first part of the application. It says postmark for September 1st, so.
Yeah, your next meeting, everything has to be finalized. There is a form, you do have to, a pretty generally designed and it needs to be sent, registered mail with returning receipt.
If we decide to do this, would it be okay if we review this, the business meeting? You know, if any of us had changes, we could discuss that. And then that would, I don't know, what's the date of the meeting, the next meeting?
26th.
26th?
What means?
The next business meeting.
Our meeting.
So then that would give four, five days to do it.
Is that enough time to, if we change anything?
Yes.
That's enough time then. And then that way you'll have your final numbers on every day and.
How much are you applying for? I missed.
We haven't added it up, but the maximum that Laking County can receive is 48,000 and some dollars.
That's for the whole county?
For the entire county. If no one else applies for any, we could possibly get it all.
Now, if we apply for all of it and they are giving other people money, can, will they just give us some of the money, maybe?
What was that, no?
Yes, they would.
Oh, they would?
Yeah.
They would have to adjust whatever the proposal was to do that. What I need to know, I think it's real important here, in the past when we've done this, we always had supporting funds. So we weren't taking money out of the pot, we were filling in that type of thing, so. You know, I need to find out, if you don't know the exact matching amount. Of course, that's usually there, it is right there. Matching funds, a minimum 2.5% match is required for all projects, so. It does have to come from somewhere. I know that I've asked for records for, with this investigation, all of the park committee funds. When I get that, I can review all that and know all the numbers. I know in the past, there were all those efforts to do that with the nature works grant. Last time it was successful, Michael Pitcher had come up with some very resourceful ways for us to be able to do that. And there are the grants that have been, did you include all the references that we've successfully gotten within the narrative?
No, I didn't. I did include the other nature works grant that we have gotten.
I don't remember paying that much out for that.
We did, it's all in kind work.
We did a lot of in-kind work.
Right, and that's.
Do you consider in-kind work magic funds?
If, well, those forms that we've filled out in the past, yes. And the same thing, like they credit any equipment that you need to use. If you're going to do the labor. They actually have on their website, how much, if you're going to use a dump truck for an hour.
Yeah, like the cost and what that would be, sure.
That all has to be done and advanced.
Exactly.
So you have to.
And obviously with this file on the equipment, you know, maybe.
And that's something that we did need to know to put in our form. What equipment would be used, how many hours you think you would use it, then we can put that in our cost analysis.
Sure.
We were going to hand out volunteer forms. Which also offsets about 25%.
Jenna, could you provide everybody with a copy of the last grant information? Could you give us a comparison?
Do you want a copy of the last grant?
I'd like, I need it before we meet again to review all of it.
It's like 27 pages and then some.
I only need one.
If you don't want me to copy it, you can leave it down there, come down and review it. I need to, I need to review that because this matching fund part is a critical part of this.
I think we used all of it applying.
I think, I think last time it was.
We had too many.
I don't remember paying much at all.
No, I don't think we did.
I can't remember an exact amount. I can look back. What, do you know what you got with?
I think it's 2,000.
Yeah, we need to know how much is in the park fund. If you fill out another record request, then I'll, I'll have it toward you. But funds is something you need to look at. Just roughly adding these up here without several items. And it's, what's the minimum that you're going to, this is, adds up to at least 9, 10,000, doesn't it? For what you have on that?
One item is 10,000 dollars.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, the mulch is 10,000 dollars.
Oh, okay, I didn't see the best. So, so the entire thing is 11, 12,000 minimum if you're using these?
That price includes taking the old mulch out, but.
No, that just includes the new mulch, 10,000 dollars.
Okay, this is the rubber Geo.
Yeah, it's made, made in this really.
And the GeoTech, yeah, GeoTech fabric, 20-year guarantee.
Did you get more than a quote on this, or is this through Meyer Designs for that part, or?
No, this isn't through Meyer Designs, but we are getting a quote from Meyer, so we have two comparisons.
For that item, or are there anything else on there?
From Meyer Design.
Well, from them or anywhere else. The quotes you got, or you just got those to get rough estimates of what it might cost from somebody?
Yes, yes.
So the minimum looks like 10, 12,000 without?
We're probably going to be at least 30,000 because we figure by the time we get the fence and everything, it'll be close to 30,000.
So you're going to be asking for roughly 30,000, the grant itself is what you're proposing that we touch it? Ask for 30,000?
Or more. Until we add everything up, we can give you that final figure at the meeting.
Yeah.
So it's going to be somewhere between 30,000 and 48,000?
Yes. Each time you apply for this grant, you lose points. Like we've already lost 25 points because this is our second application.
You're talking about the successful one you got?
Yes.
That doesn't seem right, does it?
You get 25 points then, so that's your first time for applying for the grant.
So we haven't advanced that time. Is that point schedule?
Yes, it is. And we've tried, we've tried to address so that we would get the most points. Like our rules and regulations sign, if it's in two languages, you get extra points for that.
Did you want to read this for Dan to hear, for no one else to hear it really?
Go ahead, do you want to?
Do you want to read it?
No, I don't.
We can all read it on my own gut until the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
We all have a copy.
So what else do you need from us today?
I, I think that's everything. It's just that you need to put it in the budget.
So we need to think about if we can allocate any monies towards that. So we'll have that by the time, by the business meeting.
Well, it's 25% is whatever the amount is, is what three tracks come up with.
Sure. But also if we could do in-kind stuff, you know, as far as equipment and all that. If you guys have questions, you know, whatever equipment that we have, whatever, let me know. And I'll let you know. Some of the stuff I might not know, like how long is it going to take to remove that mulch? We probably rough guess it, we can give you a pretty close idea.
What's the current balancing part from?
I don't know.
Rob, if we're feeling that, just a question.
Can you include that too, because they would need to know what we have.
Yeah, another thing that they have in there is like what fundraisers we've had to help offset, help maintain.
Sure.
You've got that in here?
Yes, it's in there.
How much have, in 2014, how much has your friends group raised?
Approximately 300 dollars.
That's been deposited in the park fund?
No.
What about the money at the the Easter event that the seniors had a big sale?
It's been deposited with.
That's in addition to the 300?
Yes. It was almost 200?
Yeah, 186 or something.
So, but we still have a balance in there, don't we, Jenna?
Yeah.
Remember doing this form before this, when now people ask people if they can come on Thursday, Fridays, whatever. It'll be that, correct?
Yes, and they do around 15 dollars per hour for each hour pledged.
Okay. Do we need that, do we need it?
I don't think we do.
Just let her do it, just like, if you want to start blocking?
I don't think we need a motion until it's done and we're going to do it. I mean, unless you guys just want to, just to let them proceed.
Sure, for clarification here, at the last meeting, it was kind of revealed that there's two friends of Bowling Green Township now. Is this, what entity are you?
We are a friend of Bowling Green Township.
You say you have a board now?
Yes.
So it's, I assume you're the spokesman or president?
That's not really on the agenda today.
Well, I'm trying, these are people presenting this, I want to know who they are. Because it's kind of confusing.
They're residents of the township.
So you're the president, is that right?
Who elected you president?
And you said Edmund Rowe's team, I'm reminded.
Yes.
And who else is involved with narrative here and what they're deciding that they want it? Who, who, you know, is it just you?
Lee Sherwood, Dean Cryer, Terry Hartman.
And do you have meeting minutes to provide from your meetings?
No.
Lisa may have some.
Is there a secretary?
Yes.
What are your other officers then? You've got a president, vice pres, he's a vice president?
I don't think it's relevant in this meeting, really.
It is to me, I've been asked.
Well, just because it's to you that, I don't think it's relevant in this meeting.
It's relevant to this, to me, and I need to know.
It's your popular, your.
Well, there's an entity here that's coming forward that wants us to.
Can we just consider the residents of the township that are presented a grant to us?
Sure, so we have.
Okay, so then we just stop at there.
So we have resident Patty Bullen, resident Edmund Rowe, resident DeCrier, and then some of your other friends don't resign in the township. Is that right? So is it, is it sufficient to do this at our next meeting? Or do we need this three or four days sufficient amount of time to get this deadline in, Jenna? In the time we have?
I just want to.
Because we're going to, we're going to review it individually. Hopefully you'll get all the information that I know I need to look at. And that will hopefully be several days prior to the meeting. Is there sufficient time from the meeting, from the time we have a chance to convene again?
I should already answered that question.
I'm asking you. We haven't even, you know, the public hasn't even heard anything of, you know, you haven't written a narrative or anything. Is there a place where the public can view this form and read?
I got a good idea.
If anybody wants a copy, tell me and I'll email it to you.
Go ahead and read it, Jeff. It's a great idea, didn't it?
I'll review it just like everyone else is. Did you see email, you wrote a request and I physically read it?
If you'd like to, go ahead.
Okay, this is what Patty's friends of Bowling Green Township is presenting this.
I think it's important.
Patty, I just noticed one page here, there's got stuff filled in. Is there any more on this application? Or just the financial part? It's all in the narrative?
No, there is a lot filled in on the different pages.
More than just the one page?
Yes.
I'll just read the narrative then, because I have to come through to find where that is. Okay, they're presenting this. And it looks like it's structured well along with the way it's sent here numerically. Justification being number one. The community park in Bowling Green Township is owned by people of all ages and is the only park within 15 mile radius. More than 1,700 people are served by the park, including more than 450 children. The park is located along Historic National Road, about 40.
Are you going to take notes while you're reading this?
Yeah, I am.
I don't want to interrupt that.
Well, I don't want to interrupt reading it to interject things as they come up.
Can you put that along?
For example, you know, this information that you utilized in those premises to get this.
I want a copy, I want a copy.
Well, I'm going to change the idea.
It's just one example, that's a good source and in past grants I've applied for, it references, we got that from that source. Do you reference any other sources here too? I just noticed somewhere here it said about ADA, that's coming up, ADA requirements. Do you have source documents that will be attached to this?
Yes.
Okay, I'll continue.
No, I'll just make a motion, Jenny, go ahead and post it online so anybody can review it. That'll get us time to review it and then the public time to review it.
Motion is moved, is a second.
Roll call Dan.
Please, please read the motion, clarification.
Ben made a motion to put the narrative online. So that everybody can read it. Jeff?
Ah, discussion, when, when are we going to be able to get that, yeah?
In a couple of days, we should be on that.
All right, you want to vote yes? Did you do all three?
Please read it.
Have you read that? I have moved to adjourn.
No, we do have one other grant we wanted to mention that we're looking at. The deadline for it is the 29th of August. We're asking for 100,000 dollars to redo the township hall and the community building.
What kind of grant is that?
It's through Lowe's. We do not have the matching funds. They do all labor provider, so they're going to redo our project.
Sorry, what was the deadline for?
August 29th.
Is this there here?
Yes.
I move to adjourn, business complete, that we advertised what we're having today.
Do you guys have anything else from us before the business meeting?
Actually, on the Lowe's grant, we would like something so that we can go ahead and proceed with that.
I know a little bit about it. It brought to my attention, I talked to Patty about, about it. And I also spoke with a gentleman who I was, who came out the other day. Spoke to me about it, and I looked at our building, our meeting going here. Was in the meeting going, just very briefly looked at a few things. It's up to 100,000 dollar grant to help rehab, rehab cost. So I kind of foredoed a little bit. He's going to, supposed to get back to me today or tomorrow, must manage a few things. So I guess I'll kind of work with them or I'll take charge of it, whatever, to see if maybe we can I guess receive some grant money to help us do some rehab projects here in the building. There's a, you can read the paper that was given to you. So the deadline is always 29th, which will be after our meeting, so myself or Patty will have the information for the business meeting. A lot of these grants are kind of time sensitive, when you find out a lot of the, you know, you don't have very long to get them put back in. Anything else from you? All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Since the public wasn't able to hear this, I'm gonna stay here and go ahead and read this information on this, at least the narrative for this, from Patty Bowlin's friends of Bowling Green Township. Number one, justification of need. Justification of need. The community park in Bowling Green Township is used by people of all ages and is the only park within fifteen mile radius. More than seventeen hundred people are served by the park, including more than four hundred fifty children. The park is located along the Historic National Road Route Forty in the town of Brownsville. In addition, the park is used by visitors and travelers along this historic road, particularly during the summertime. Historically, Brownsville was well-known as a Pike Town on the National Road and the host of the Second Frontier. It was hosted to a, it was host to a national conserv, conservation event in nineteen forty-seven. Too many notes to take, have to do it later and go through some footnotes and things. The park is fortunate to have a community building that is used for community events and throughout the year for recreation, family reunions, community picnics, holiday parties, weddings, receptions, funeral dinners, meet the candidates, numerous other events, and used by the Board of Elections as the polling location for our township. Until nineteen ninety-four, the building was used as a storage building for an oil and gas company. It was renovated in nineteen ninety-four and needs updated. Through private donations, contributions from the township, and a Nature Works Grant Award in two thousand ten, recent park upgrades have included new commercial playground equipment, fixtures to hold compliant ground coverings in the play area, two new swings, a flagpole with memorial brick base, and construction of a shelter house, along with some picnic tables placed in the shelter. The current project includes replacing fence sections that are damaged, adding fence where there is none, so the park will be fully fenced, installing two four-foot gates and ten-foot gate to comply with ADA and ABA requirements, installing a drinking fountain, installing solar sun shades over the playground area, painting the picnic tables, shelter house, and community building, purchasing new floral planters, adding rubber mulch under the playground equipment, putting new rules and regulations, signs in place, purchasing a new marquee sign to announce special events held in the park, and tables and chairs for events held in the park. This project is expected to reduce the cost of maintenance, fully comply with insurance company recommendations for ground cover, and improve the park to better serve the community. The park is situated along Route Forty, a major route, with moderate to heavy traffic. Fencing the entire park would make it safer for the children to use and act as a barrier to keep small children from running into the road. The current fence is damaged and in bad shape. A portion along the west and south sides have no fencing, making it easy for children to run into the street, see photos. The two four-foot gates will allow access to the park from two different sides and comply with ADA and ABA regulations. The ten-foot gate will allow township workers to bring needed equipment into the park for maintenance. The drinking fountain was discussed extensively at many meetings and would allow children and families to stay in the park longer without being concerned about the children being dehydrated due to the entire park being exposed to direct sun rays. Solar sun shades would allow children to use the park during hot summer days by providing shade over the playground equipment to reduce the heat on the equipment, see photos. Adding rubber mulch under the playground equipment would make it safer for the children, extend the life of the mulch, and reduce maintenance costs. By adding rubber mulch, it will eliminate some health issues caused by the current wood mulch. Mulch grows in the wet mulch, so children with asthma often have a difficult time playing in the park. A new marquee sign is needed for in front of the park for, to announce special events to the community. Our current sign is small and broken, making it difficult to put an announcement sign, see photos. An information box attached to the community building would make it possible to post flyers such as lost pet flyers for each group events and other public notices. Currently, there are two residential park benches in the park. Both are broken and need replaced with commercial park benches. This would allow our seniors to play, a place to sit and visit with one another, see photos. We would like to landscape our park by adding four large concrete flower pots to the front of the park, making it more inviting to use and more easily recognized. We would like to see a more park-like setting with the addition of flowers and perhaps a tree to offer shade in the future. Our current flower planters are in disrepair and not level. They do not add to the beauty of the park, see photo. We want to replace our current rules and regulations sign with a new, larger one that is more visible to park attendees. We would like the sign to be in both English and Spanish. Our current sign is damaged, see photos. We closed our copies of our park survey that included, that include many of the above suggestions. Also, a master plan is included. This plan was originally submitted for our Nature Works Grant in two thousand ten and has been revised several times since then. Included are minutes from the former park committee that address some of the issues for which we are seeking funding. Number two is documentation of local funds. An appropriate signed resolution is included. Fiscal officer has reviewed interim budget and confirmed that funding will be available. Including in the application packet, you will find a number of pledges for donations, in kind for the required labor. Bowling Green Township will supply all necessary equipment and any labor required to meet the installation is not otherwise donated or pledged. Three is operation and maintenance. Annual maintenance costs are expected to include three hundred dollars of purchased material for ground cover, a hundred and fifty dollars for paint or sealer, and seventy-five dollars for flowers. Weekly and annual project maintenance costs will be provided from the rental of the community building. In two thousand thirteen, the rental receipts were XXXXX. Daily, comma, weekly and monthly inspections will be conducted by the township trustees and absorbed in the township general budget. Four, accessibility. There is currently a barrier-free access and clear path from the parking area to the park and designated playground. Current plan includes the same access. The plan to replace the current ground cover with mulch, with rubber mulch, does include a rise to hold the cover in place. There's access to the playground equipment for dis, disabled persons via a section of the rise being left open and tapered to the ground. Five, planning. Brownsville Park is the only park in Bowling Green Township. Park is managed by the township trustees and an appointed volunteer group. Friends of Bowling Green Township Committee members. Friends also organizes park cleanups and repair activities. Discussion at public meetings for fencing, the entire park was seen as a safety issue. Currently, the park is not completely fenced, allowing children easy access to a busy road, Route Forty. The current fence that protects part of the park is broken, bent, and has safety issues. Not replacing the fence could result in the park needing to be closed, leaving children with no place to play and seniors no place to sit and visit. The public would like to have a drinking fountain installed so children and families can have water while using the park. Keeping active children hydrated is important and can have health consequences. Replacing two broken benches with new commercial benches would allow more seating in the park. Since the current benches are broken, they should be removed. However, to do so would take away sitting places for adults who are with their children and seniors who use the park as a gathering place. Park is situated in a sunny location. There's no shade for children using the playground equipment. Since the equipment is plastic and metal, the sun makes it extremely hot during the summer. Some days, equipment is too hot to be used, so solar sun shades would make the park more usable during the summer months. Competitive bids were accepted. The township trustees chose the bid recommended by Friends and did so by resolution during the township meeting of August twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. Public participation. Friends of Bowling Green Township discussed the vision for the park during their public monthly meetings. The township trustees have had public comments during their regular monthly meeting too. Multiple public events, Easter egg hunt and bake sale, private auction, National Road Yard Sale, spaghetti dinners, hog roast, and chili cook-off garnered park suggestions too. Clear evidence of public involvement can be found by continuing, counting the number of people who are willing to donate time and materials. Also disclosed is a document from the Friends of Bowling Green Township Committee that verifies the community events held two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen. And that's the narrative presented by Patty Bowlin's Friends of Bowling Green Township. This is the other grant that was brought up at the meeting through Lowe's. Lowe's Community Partners Grants. Lowe's Community Partner Grant Program helps better, build better communities by providing monetary assistance to nonprofit organizations and municipalities looking for support of high-need projects such as building renovations, upgrades, ground, grounds improvements, technology upgrades, as well as safety improvements. Grant range from five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, with most projects falling between ten thousand dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars. Our Lowe's Heroes Employee Volunteer Program is another opportunity for support which Lowe's can provide to some grant recipients to supplement the labor of projects. We encourage applicants to speak to their local store manager to see if this is a possibility before applying. Spring application cycle will run March thirty-first to May thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. The summer application cycle will run June thirtieth to August twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen. It's only two pages of two of four. Has an admission statement and some guidelines. And then this is the grant application itself. Try to find areas that Patty's friends have filled in to see what we, what we know at this point, this, this stage draft. The applicant must ensure that the development project complies with the latest accessibility guidelines under Americans with Disabilities Act ADA and Architectural Bearers Act ABA. There's a reference to those guidelines, and they must ensure the project complies with it. Okay, this is the first page I see anything filled out by Patty's friends. Form one, basic project information. Applicant agency, Bowling Green Township Trustees, Lincoln County, Ohio. Address, one five four nine on Main Street, Brownsville, Ohio, four three seven two one. Phone number of applicant agency, fiscal officer, seven four oh seven eight seven nineteen seventy-six. Has the tax ID and FEDIN number. County location of project, Lincoln County, Ohio. Name of project. Coordinator must be member of applicant agency. She's filled in, Ben Hupp Township Trustee. Phone number of local project coordinator, seven four oh four oh five two six two eight. Email address of local coordinator, Benjamin, B E N J A M I N underscore H U P P at yahoo dot com. Grant project title, fifty characters maximum, Brownsville Park Upgrade Phase Two. Grant project location, Brownsville, Ohio. Brief description of proposed grant project, fifty character maximum. Township is seeking funds to replace chain link fence around playground, add drinking fountain, two park benches, solar sun shades, landscaping, and rubber mulch under playground equipment. Replace marquee sign and rules and regulation sign. Total acreage of grant project area, zero point one six five acres. Acreage to be acquired, not applicable. Nature Works assistance requested in dollars, no sense. She has, please see county allocations for maximum request, or maybe that's part of the form. Otherwise it's blank. Total project costs, blank. Source of matched funds including other grants and pledge donations of land and or material, blank. Ohio Senate District, District Senate Thirty-One. Ohio House District, District House Ninety-One. GPS coordinates at project park entrance. Put an example on, she has north thirty-nine degrees, fifty-six foot forty-eight. West eighty-two degrees, fifteen foot twenty-eight point eight oh. Okay, that's page eight. Certification. By initiating this box, the applicant states the items and costs listed are represented, the expected items, cost of the project, and under Rice Resolution of authorized, authorization also certifies this information. Directions to project site. The park is located in the center of Brownsville from Columbus, exit one forty-one, off I seventy to Brownsville. Turn left onto State Route Forty, go about point five miles, park is on the left. Parking is in the front of park. Resolution of authorization. There are some things filled out on this page. Whereas the Bowling Green Township trustees desires financial assistance under the Nature Works Grant Program, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees at Bowling Green Township. That the Board of Trustees approves filing this application for financial assistance, that Benjamin Hupp trustee, local coordinator, is hereby authorized and directed to execute. And file an application with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and to provide all information and documentation required to become eligible for possible funding assistance. That the Bowling Green Township Board of Trustees does agree to obligate the funds required to satisfy, complete the proposed project and become eligible for reimbursement under the terms of the Nature Works Grant Program. Justification of need. It's left blank, it looks like. Uh, that's probably, okay, there we go, that's on narrative, item one, question justification need. Information about justification need. Check marks to talk about these discussions. Documentation of local funds, I believe that's addressed in the narrative. Some places to mark. Approvals and documentation. Shows the scoring criteria. These points, I don't know if those were filled in by her or if they were already there. Accessibility with scoring criteria. Planning, these are all blank. The participation, points are filled in, I don't know if, those are probably something she filled in there. Unless that's the maximum amount allowed to get, I don't know. Other scoring criteria. This point systems here. Attachments, evidence, ownership, boundary map. Nothing filled in there, it looks like, oh, those are example maps. Location map, that'll need included. Existing use map, proposed plan for site. This is all blank, a cost analysis schedule and project cost summary. Form number four B, Development Cost Analysis Schedule. Detailed project cost estimates may also be submitted in other formats. This she does have filled in. All right, first item's fence with gates, quantity four hundred and fifty feet. Unit price, six hundred dollars, total value or cost, twelve hundred dollars. Uh, fence or gate does not have unit price or estimate, that was for the commercial park bench. Two, at six hundred dollars, twelve hundred dollars. Water fountain, one, with no costs, or no, uh, entries in the cost. Solar sunshades, no entries. Marquee sign, one, total cost or value or cost, says two thousand dollars. Rubber mulch, geotech fabric, twenty-one tons, ten thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars. Uh, these, those are, that's just for the mulch, the fabric is six hundred and fifty dollars. Flower pots, four, unit price, a hundred and fifty dollars, six hundred dollars. Rules and regulation sign, one, unit price, a hundred dollars, total value or cost, a hundred dollars. Spring animal, two, two thousand dollars. Bike rack, one, five hundred dollars. Trash cans, two, no amount. Restore floor finish, no amount. Sealer protector, five gallons, no amount. Paint, four to five gallon containers, unit price, a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total cost or value or cost, they have seven hundred dollars on that one. Information box one, unit price, four hundred dollars, uh, total cost value is not listed. Primer paint, four, four or five gallon containers, seven hundred dollars. Required project sign, uh, purchased from ODNR, seventy, uh, ninety dollars each. Uh, it's one, unit price, ninety dollars. Total cost or value, ninety dollars. And there's no total. Box A must equal box B on page twenty-five. It goes on, there's no, there's nothing on page twenty-five filled out. Form five, local inter-agency agreement. A local inter-agency agreement is needed if two or more local, public, or private agencies are cooperating for purposes of funding or operating the grant project. That's blank. Form six, civil rights compliance. That's blank. Form seven, knowledge of compliance, that's blank. Local coordinator, original signature, that's what it requires. Local coordinator, original signature, it looks like all of them require that. Form eight, nature works sign and logo. Detail on that needing a local coordinator signature. Nature work sign information, not printed out well, but probably read. Form nine is also hard to read, environmental review. Does have check marks in it, it looks like. So, since that was filled out, I'll go ahead and read it. Some environmental check, that's everything's marked no on it. On the first and second page, it's all marked no. And the third page is all marked no as well. Can't really read parts of it because it's still washed out. And that's page thirty-three, looks like the end.